Good evening, everyone. I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to this County Council Town Hall Meeting. We're here at the White Oak Community Recreation Center where, as you can see, we have a room full of residents who are anxious to ask questions of the council members. But before we go to the floor for those questions, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Hans Reimer for some opening remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm Hans Reimer. I'm one of the four at-large members of the County Council, and this year I'm serving as President of the County Council. I really want to express appreciation to you for being here tonight because local government doesn't work unless people get involved. And you would be surprised at how much impact you can have on the policies and the programs of your county government by getting involved. We're going to have a good discussion tonight. These forums are very useful to us. We hear about the changing needs of the community at forums like this. We hear about opportunities to deliver better services, to better target our efforts to make this a better place to live. And we have a chance to directly engage with you, which is of great importance to us. So, this is a regular thing for us. We're doing town halls in different parts of the county as often as we can. Tonight, we have two council members who are participating in a forum on the education budget. They can't be with us this evening, but we are joined by seven of the nine. And White Oak is on our mind. You're standing here tonight in a beautiful new recreation facility. I know you enjoy this facility, at least if you're in this part of the county. And there's a lot going on in East County in our budget. We're about to begin our budget deliberations tomorrow. We will receive the recommended budget from the County Executive. And I'm sure many of the questions tonight will be about the budget priorities of our community, and we look forward to addressing those. But we'll begin our deliberations on the county budget, and by the end of the spring, we will wrap up the program of investments in the budget for the next fiscal year. And that runs from July 1st to June 31st of the following year. So it's going to be a big, busy spring, lots going on. And this is a great time for you to bring issues to our attention, and to urge us to take action, and to let us know what you think about how things are going. Keeps our fingers on the pulse of the community. So I'd like to first ask my colleague to my left, Nancy Navarro, who is Vice President of the Council, to introduce ourselves, and then we'll go to Mr. Elrich and come down the row of chairs.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Navarro, and I represent District 4. Actually, it's the west part of New Hampshire Avenue, the mid-part of the county. I do live near here, about a mile from here in Colesville. I chair the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, and I serve on the Education Committee. I've been on the County Council since 2009, and I really do look forward to our conversation this evening.
I'm Mark Elrich. Can you guys hear me?
No.
They say no.
Can you share?
Hello. I'm Mark Elrich, and I'm a County Council member at large. I'm the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. I serve on the Education Committee. And when I was first married, I used to live in this neighborhood.
Hi, everybody. That sounded way too loud. My name's Tom Hucker, and I represent District 5, which you're in. So who here lives in Silver Spring, Toccoe Park, East County? Excellent. Okay. Those of you who don't, welcome to East County. We have loving families, strong communities, great restaurants. We hope you stay late. We hope you come back on Saturday and spend a lot of money. And we hope we hear all your questions tonight. Thanks very much for being here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Florine, at-large member for the County Council. I chair the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee, and serve in the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure, and Environment Committee. I've been on the Council for 15 years. It's my last year, and I want to thank you very much for the privilege to be able to serve you for that many years. I look forward to your questions.
And I'm George Leventhal, an at-large council member, which means I work for everyone in Montgomery County, Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee, and I serve on the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee. Great to see so many people here tonight.
And I'm Roger Berliner, and I represent the western part of the county, from the DC line all the way to the Frederick County line along the Potomac River. And I serve as Chair of our Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy, and Environment Committee, and I serve with Mr. Leventhal in the Health and Human Services Committee. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening.
Okay.
All right, let's begin.
We are ready.
Good evening. My name is Coach Fofo, and first of all, I want to thank all the council members present tonight. Thank you for your great job, your support, by everything you've been doing for the community. But I have a question tonight. I just want to be, you know, through that. How can we improve the recreation facility on the East County, especially in White Oak here, who are serving more than 350 kids from age four to high school? We only have only one field, and we'll be using from the whole year. And sometime it's very, you know, I don't know how to describe the face of the field. So we want improvement so we can continue to serve and with the best quality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hucker.
Coach, folks who don't know Coach Fofo, let me just thank him publicly for everything he does to train all so many young people in this whole area where there's not enough recreational opportunities, to train them not just in skills of how to be a great soccer player, but how to be a great kid, how to be a great adult, how to be a great leader. There's not nearly enough recreation programs in the east side of the county. There's not enough opportunities for our kids. This is a great facility. We need a number of facilities just like this, I believe. So thanks for everything you're doing. You don't get enough support from the county, in my opinion. And, you know, it's volunteers like Coach Fofo that are one of the things that make Montgomery County a really great place because of the robust volunteer network that we have. Let me also turn it over, since I don't serve on the Fed Committee that deals with the Rec Department, let me turn it over to George Leventhal.
Well, Coach, great to see you. I want to echo everything Tom Hucker said. We really need to invest in this play area because it is not up to playing field standards. We need a plan. We need to work with the Recreation Department, and maybe with the Parks Department. So we've talked about this before. We need to set it in motion. I'll certainly try to get something in motion in this year's budget, whether we're able to do it in the first year or not, I don't know. But absolutely, not only your ACDA Youth Development Association, but other uses of the field, it's just not structured for the use that it's getting, and it's in bad condition. It's not up to the standards that we should expect for a playing field here, and I will follow up on that.
Thank you, Coach. Susan.
Hi. My name's Nancy Roslin-Rappaport, and I live in the Hillendale Heights section off of Chalmers on Royal Road, the same house that I was brought back to from the hospital after I was born, some 50-something years ago. My question, it's a comment and a question. First, I was greatly saddened by the closing of The Classics in downtown Silver Spring, which leads me to what can be done with either the council, county, or state to make this area, the East County section, more vibrant. Especially, I'm thinking of an example that I brought to the council several years ago and never heard back about Wegmans. They are opening stores like Crazy in Virginia, in Howard County, in PG County, and even one coming up in DC. And except for, I think, one in Germantown, we are being completely ignored, and we have so much space and people willing and ready to spend money, just like everyone else does. We should not be second-class citizens in this part of the county.
Thank you. That's a great question. I know that's the kind of question that's on the mind of a lot of people. First, I wanted to speak to what's happening with the restaurants in downtown Silver Spring. It is unfortunate that The Classics closed. I certainly, well, maybe not. I certainly spent a lot of time there. If you go to downtown Silver Spring, you will see a lot of restaurants are opening right now. Urban Butcher is expanding. District Taco is coming. The Quarry House just reopened. Silver Spring, there's two new breweries that'll be opening up in just a few months. Silver Spring is moving forward at a very rapid pace. We are on top of the Department of Liquor Control to make sure that they are an effective partner for county restaurants. But I want to say, I don't buy that line, that it was the Liquor Board that caused them to change. I think markets change, and at times, the makeup of businesses in the community can change. But, thank you very much. I see Silver Spring thriving. That's what I see. Now, I'd like to turn it to my colleague.
And if I could weigh in as well, Councilmember Florine. One of the challenges with the East County is this portion of the county was under moratorium for opportunities for a number of years. That made it very, very difficult for new businesses to enter the marketplace. What we finally did, we finally got some break in it, and you got some pop-ups such as they are just up the road. Never has been enough. What we do hope is with the FDA development, we're going to see some major reinvestment here. And we've been working really hard to market Montgomery County, to, well, the whole county, but certainly the East County as well, to businesses that want to locate here. We're really, are desperate for locating jobs in this part of the county, as well as throughout the county, to expand the tax base and to create the market for places like The Classics and all the other kinds of business opportunities and amenities that everyone would like to see. So we'll see how it goes, but we've been working very hard to make that happen.
And we know that you want more amenities. We know that you want more restaurants. We know that you want more community life. We know that, and we're trying to address it. That's what the White Oak Development is about. We understand that that is a deficit here, and that's a need here, and we are doing everything we can. George.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Councilmember Hucker and I have had several meetings with the owners of the Burtonsville Crossing, which was really left high and dry when Route 29 was rerouted. And there will be good news very soon, both with respect to office development and commercial tenants locating in Burtonsville, understanding also that as Viva White Oak, which is now going through the approval process at the Planning Board, comes online, there will also be restaurants and shopping that will be part of the Viva White Oak Development. So I would say, within the next four to five years, you're going to see a lot of new development and shopping and restaurant opportunities all along the Route 29 corridor, and you're going to see bus rapid transit in the Route 29 corridor in this six-year capital budget, and you'll begin to be able to get back and forth much more easily. So a lot of good things really are happening in the East County.
Hi. My name is John Foley. I live over here in Calverton. Good evening. Good evening, everyone else. So basically, I'll start out with, my issue right now is, we live over in Calverton, and my kids go to school in Beltsville. It's a 10-minute drive with no traffic. During the mornings, it takes 20 minutes, okay? Twice as long as it should. I take Calverton Boulevard into PG County into Beltsville. The big problem where this comes in, or the reason it's so bad, is there's a ton of cars coming off I-95, coming into Montgomery County, and they're using Calverton Boulevard as a shortcut, okay? And this is a little bit more, this highlights a little bit bigger of a problem, is that there's a lot of development going on, okay? We have the hospital going on right here, which is not even open yet, still being built. We have the White Oak Village, or the Life Science Center coming around. We have something coming on in Burtonsville at some point, and we want to bring in Amazon, right? Amazon's great. I work in IT. I'd love to bring in Amazon. I'd love to shorten my commute. The problem is, is the infrastructure, or the problem that I see, the infrastructure in Montgomery County was built the '40s, '50s, '60s, and by infrastructure, I mean roads and houses. All the houses are like that old, right? So it's not like we can just tear down the houses and build more roads. We're kind of stuck with the roads that we got. So what are you guys doing? I mean, development's great. I know we want to get Montgomery County on the map, but the infrastructure is just becoming a serious problem.
Great question. Thank you very much.
It takes forever for me to get my kids to school, and it's not getting better. Except, the hospital's not even open yet. So I want to hear your guys' plans. And I've reached out to my council member, and I want to hear what you guys want to say about this.
Okay. We'll start with the Chair of the Transportation Committee, Roger Berliner.
So, great question. And as you observed, there's not a lot of space for a lot of new roads, right? That's not, we're not going to be able to build our way out of this. So part of what we're doing, and you heard an allusion to it earlier, is to get state-of-the-art bus rapid transit down 29.
It only goes to White Oak. No one stops right here. It doesn't go all the way to Silver Spring.
Oh, actually, no, no, forgive me. So our bus rapid transit plan will go all the way to Silver Spring. And if we get to do it right, and we have our fingers crossed, it'll be in a dedicated lane in the middle. You'll be saying goodbye to the traffic as you sit comfortably in a very sweet vehicle, being able to do your work on your iPad, on your iPhone, and just wave goodbye to the traffic. That's what we're trying to create in terms of state-of-the-art transit. Let me also share with you something else that we've been working on, which is state-of-the-art traffic signals. You know, many communities have invested in state-of-the-art traffic signals so that you don't go from a green light to a red light, to a green light to a red light, which I do every day in the communities that I visit, and it drives me crazy. And it doesn't have to be that way. You can have sensors in the road that tell exactly when the light needs to change in order to accommodate the traffic, and it reduces travel times by 15 percent. So those are the kinds of investments that I hope we'll be able to make. More reversible lanes, more use of shoulders, as Mr. Leventhal said earlier today. We need to use our existing capacity more efficiently, as well as create state-of-the-art transit. Both need to happen. Mark.
So, one of the things about the bus rapid transit is, there's not just what goes down 29, but there's the proposal for New Hampshire Avenue and Randolph as well. And the point was to give everybody here enough interconnectivity that you can go to multiple points in the county if you live in the Route 29 corridor, and that's important. When I first started working on this, people said, "Why are you doing it there? There's no business there." And I said, "Well, there may not be any business there now, but we've stranded this huge portion of Montgomery County's population on the east side of the county with no transit whatsoever, and they have a right to try to get to work." And so I don't need to justify it by saying there's development at both ends of it. There's enough justification from all of you who are trying to use transit and get to your jobs and have some mobility around here. So I hope that, over time, we lay out enough of this network, that you all have the kind of choices that you deserve, and you can get, not just to Silver Spring, but get up to Rockville Pike, and get down to Fort Totten, and get into DC as another alternative that way.
I'm going to weigh in, too. Particularly, the projects that are coming, that we know about for sure, they do have transportation obligations to deliver, some road access points, and various commitments to reducing traffic. But I have to tell you, I don't believe personally that transit's the only solution. And there is a reason we have such problems on 29. Years ago, I've been around long enough, there used to be a connector road that ran from University Boulevard up to where instead they built Demond Oaks. That would have provided relief to Route 29. That was a political decision that was made to take it off the books. We are currently grappling with the decision of whether or not to build a road. There are other roads in Montgomery County that are on the books and that are not being built. And so I urge people, if you would like to also drive your car as well as take transit, please tell your elected officials and ask them questions about that in the upcoming election, because it really is an issue that is not talked about enough. I'm kind of the lone voice on it at this point, and it's very lonely.
So, BRT is great. Dedicated lane would be awesome, okay? I'd love to see that. But the hospital, Aventus Hospital, Life Science Village, Viva White Oak, that's all bringing stuff to East County, okay? Those people are not taking the BRT down south on 29. We're talking about people coming to East County, into East County, coming off 95. That's what's not being looked at, in my opinion.
Thank you. Good observation. We'll need to look into that further.
I'm Lila Hertzberg. First, I'd like to thank you guys for making yourselves available tonight on this chilly evening. I live and work in Upper County, and I have a question about the concerns seniors and transportation. I don't know if you're aware, but in a couple of weeks, the seniors who attend the senior centers in the county are about to lose their Friday transportation. So that means people who normally come to the centers, they have a nice hot lunch, they socialize, they get out, they're taking exercise classes. There are many, some with us tonight, who will not be able to come anymore on Fridays, and we wonder if there's something you can do about that.
Thank you very much. You are correct about that change, and it is an unfortunate part of the savings plan that we recently did have to adopt. And in this year's budget, we will review whether there is a possibility of improving or restoring any services, as we always do every year in the budget. And over the last few years, we have been able to expand senior transportation services quite substantially. This particular program, which is, you know, more like a shuttle program serving particular locations, is, you know, one of the programs, but there are dozens that we've been able to expand as well, you know, whether that is shuttle service to other locations, free buses for seniors, or the work we have done to try to fund on-demand transportation, taxi fleets for wheelchair residents who are in wheelchairs. So there's a lot going on. And we have heard you, and we will make a note of that, and we will review that carefully in the budget this year and see if we can make a change. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Eric Spinoglu. I'm from Alney, Maryland. As a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, I'm extremely disturbed by the fact that county officials have recently signed a non-disclosure agreement in order to have secret negotiations with Amazon regarding tax breaks. Don't you believe that public officials have the responsibility to share with the public how the public's money is being spent?
Thank you, Eric. You know, first of all, I don't know that any council members have signed any non-disclosure agreements, but your point is an important one. And there are times when we are discussing whether a company will locate, and this is not an Amazon thing. This is a standard procedure. When we are discussing real estate that we need to purchase, and we don't want the other, we don't want private investors to know about it. There are times when we must have a level of confidentiality, but in the end, any decision that must be made, must be made in the full sunshine, in the public view, in an accountable manner. And any decision that is made about Amazon or any other business coming here must be one that is voted on by your county council.
And state legislature.
And, well, to the extent that it is a county law or policy. If it is a state law or policy, it must be voted on by the state legislature.
If a deal does exist with Amazon, don't you think that it should be revealed to the public?
When, I mean, there is no deal, right? There are only negotiations that barely have started. But if there, to the extent that any policy, whether it is tax or any other policy, it must be presented in full public view, and it must be discussed and debated. And people like us who have to run for office must be the ones who have to be accountable for those decisions, and that will not change. Thank you, Eric.
Here's the reality. If you're concerned about a race to the bottom, and if you're concerned about public benefits being expended for a private company, if the early negotiations were done in public, the race to the bottom would be much worse. If the state of Maryland laid out every detail now, before we even know if we got Amazon, then the other 19 communities that are trying to get Amazon would try to outbid us, and there would be more and more and more public subsidies put on the table. So at a very early stage, some of the discussion, some, is proprietary and confidential. By the time the actual deal is made, we don't know where Amazon's going to go. Everything is public. But in the early stage of the dialogue, it's proprietary. And that's the reality of being an elected official, is that sometimes you are privy to confidential information, and the ethics law says that that information may not be disclosed. But that's at the very early stage of a discussion.
Susan.
Again, thank you for being here tonight and taking up our questions. My name is Ami Friedman. I live in White Oak, Maryland, and I have a question, and I think applies to most people in this room, whether they have kids in school or not. For the last 10 years or so, the average score of a student in a East County school has been in the 20s and 30s. The Board of Education has known about that. Whatever measure, by comparison, the average score in affluent parts, in affluent schools in the county, in the western part of the county, is in the 80s to 90s. I'm talking about the Potomac, Chevy Chase, Bethesda area. Now, if elected or re-elected, what would you do in order to catch up on this severe gap? And would you, I'd like to hear some specifics, not general comments, and would you go as far as resigning if your method of improvement does not work? And most of all, why should you believe, should we believe anything that you would like, that you would have instituted, given that other promises have been made to us in the past and not kept?
Who wants to jump into that?
First of all, thank you so much for your question. There are a lot of factors, in my opinion, that have contributed to what is termed the academic achievement gap. I think the number-one issue is access to opportunities, and it is no secret that in some more affluent communities, there are children who actually have tutors before they even start kindergarten. It is no secret that issues around the first five years, which is, you know, things, you know, issues regarding early childhood education, childcare, for example, you know, it's quite expensive in Montgomery County to put a child in quality licensed childcare. So it's no secret that when you have areas that are more affluent, parents can pay more, which means that children enter school already with an advantage. So this notion of, what are we going to do with education, has a lot to do also with what are we doing to enhance the economic opportunities of certain areas of the county. Earlier, somebody was mentioning the issues of the East County. It is very true that in the East County, you have seen this historic concentration of market affordable, affordable housing, not a lot of job opportunities, not a lot of amenities. And that, I think, has also contributed to this notion that you don't have as much access to opportunities. And so these redevelopment projects, they mean more than just the fact that you have redevelopment projects. Hopefully, they'll bring jobs. They will bring more of those opportunities. We raised the minimum wage. We've done a lot of things to address that piece. Now, the County Council receives a request from the Executive. We're going to receive that tomorrow, and it's going to include a request from the Board of Education, okay? And so we will get into this discussion of the funding levels. We do not tell the Board of Education, and I serve on the Board, we do not tell them, "I want you to take this money and put it in the East County schools." By law, we can't do that. The Board of Education determines that. But what we do do is make sure that we work with HHS, Recreation, Department of Economic Development, land use decisions that are made, to ensure that we don't neglect any part of the county. And I have to tell you, I mean, I've been doing this for quite a while, and I used to represent, I represented the East County for two years. And one of my first acts was to ask the Planning Board to include the White Oak redevelopment project in their plan, because there was nothing in the pipeline. And so I thank you for that question, but I think the real measurement is going to be in, how are we investing in all these other areas, policy areas, to bring up opportunities in the East County, to encourage parents also, and help them participate, because it's all connected. It's not just what you do as county council members for the schools, because our responsibility is to give that funding, and then to hold them accountable. But our main responsibility is to make sure that there isn't that wealth and economic gap in some parts of the county versus other parts.
Mark. Okay, I'm going to invite council members to reply.
So if the Board is not achieving results, elect a different Board. The County Council has zero ability to control policies as a school board. Even recommendations they make to us are simply, "This is how we're going to spend your money," and we approve it in several very broad categories. I was a school teacher at Rawling Terrace, which is one of the most impacted schools in the county. I will tell you, from firsthand experience, how important poverty is, and how important it is to change the conditions of living for people if we expect the kids to be able to perform better. You simply cannot come to school hungry. You cannot come from a family where people, where your parents are fighting and worrying about whether they're going to put a roof over their head next week, and then expect the kid to saunter into class like a kid from a middle-class neighborhood someplace else who's not thinking about this, and somehow put all that aside and say, "I want to focus." And God forbid the kid's hungry, because I taught kids whose last hot meal was Friday afternoon, and the next hot meal was Monday morning breakfast. That is a load, and we have put an enormous social, emotional load on students and young children who aren't equipped to deal with this. Adults aren't equipped to deal with this, let alone children. So I believe pretty strongly that you fund the school system, you don't get into stupid arguments about maintenance of effort, you focus, you ask the question that we should ask any department, "What do you need to solve the problem in front of you?" And to the best of our abilities, we need to do that. But we need an outside-the-school strategy that deals with wages, which is why I twice fought to lift the living wage and the minimum wage in this county, and why fought to lift the living wage and the minimum wage in this county, and why you deal with all these other services that support families. So support us when we propose budgets that have a strong social component, because you want to help kids, make sure we support kids.
Roger.
Just very briefly, I want to make sure you appreciate, we do have a new school superintendent by the name of Jack Smith, Dr. Jack Smith. I'm one of those people, I think he's terrific. And one of the things he is totally committed to is metrics and transparency, school by school, grade by grade. If you can't see the numbers, if you can't track how kids are doing, you can't hold people accountable. He is doing that work now. It's literally going to be unveiled this year, I hope. And so I'm a big fan of transparency and metrics, so that none of us cannot be held accountable, including the school board. It is among the most frustrating aspects of our job, is that we write the check but don't have control over the system. I'd much rather be held accountable for something I control. So just know that it is an awkward conversation for us, that we write the check to the school system, can't tell them how to spend it, but I do urge you to follow Jack Smith's work and see the transparency and hold the school system accountable.
Okay, I just want to add to that. One of the growing focuses at the council is early childhood education. We understand that kids are coming into kindergarten on a very different level of preparedness to learn, and we want all kids to be ready to learn. And so we have been investing more in childcare subsidies, so that kids who might otherwise not have the chance to even have a professional childcare setting can have access to quality private care. We've been investing in Head Start, so that kids can get wraparound, you know, services, and their whole families can have support. We've been doing our best to increase investments in early education, so that we can help stop that achievement gap or that opportunity gap from opening in the first place. Susan.
Well, it's time for a quick break, but don't go away, folks. We'll be back with more of our town hall meeting from White Oak. Stay with us.
Here we go, we're going to make some juice.
It's going to be good.
She's excited. A little bit of kale.
Please don't put this on line.
I'm putting it all over the line.
It's wet, it needs something. No, it'll go.
Don't break my juicer. Looks good.
You ready to try it?
Come on, baby.
Challenge your kids to be active and eat healthy.
It's okay.
Okay, alright.
They might surprise you.
And she took another sip, you saw it?
Search We Can for more ideas on how you and your kids can get healthy together.
Did you check? Oh, you got it. You know, since I got rid of my car, I really enjoy walking.
Okay. Got you.
Getting pulled over for buzz driving could cost you around $10,000 in fines, legal fees, and increased insurance rates.
Oh, you're home early.
You live with your mom?
That'll set your game back a few years. Buzzed, busted, and broke, because buzz driving is drunk driving.
You wanted to be a teacher when you were little, but things changed. Teaching didn't seem that cool anymore, so you decided to become something else. But what would your 12-year-old self say? Amazing things are happening in teaching, so it's time to put it back on your list. Don't try to convince yourself otherwise, you had it right the first time.
Welcome back to White Oak at our county council town hall meeting. We are going straight back to our audience, who a lot of them have their hands up for questions.
Good evening, council members. My name is Laura Munoz Lopez. I live in Silver Spring. As a former DACA recipient who was able to adjust my status to get a green card, I'm here to talk to you about a very pressing issue that I'm sure you already know about. I'm also part of a mixed-status family. Both of my parents are undocumented, my sister is a DACA recipient, and my brother is a U.S. citizen. So as someone who has had to navigate the complex immigration system with and without a lawyer, I know the difference that having a lawyer makes. I've had to fill out my DACA application and help my sister fill hers out, hoping that it was right with not having the funds to ask a lawyer if it was turned in correctly. Given my experience, I'm deeply grateful that your council is considering granting money to the CARE Coalition, who would be able to represent Montgomery County residents who are members of our community, who are either facing deportation or detained by ICE. I'm here to ask you to please fund this important initiative to the greatest extent possible, because it would mean keeping families like mine together in the county that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your personal story, and thank you for being here tonight to be a voice for our community, as so much is happening around us in this world and in this country, as our unfortunately national leadership is targeting communities in this country for isolation, for exclusion, for demonization. We, here in Montgomery County, need to stand up for the values that we hold dear, which is that wherever you're from, we're glad you're here, you're our neighbor, you're our friend, you're in our community, and as a local government, you know, we embrace everyone and we provide support to everyone. And what you have requested, legal aid for individuals who have been targeted, is a vital need for families. So many families have complex financial circumstances, personal life circumstances, and they are unfortunately being targeted. Let's move to the next question.
Sure. I'm Mateo Colombo, I live in Aspen Hill, I have two kids in the middle school, in the school system, and I have a lot of things to say about the Amazon deal, but it seems like we can never have a debate, because things are hidden. This is Sunshine Week around the country, right? And what we know, it's just what we hear from very poor coverage, but we know we're talking about several billions of dollars. This is not just any other deal. It will impact this county in big ways, some positive, some negative, and you owe it to all of us to involve us in the conversation, and to tell us what you're going to do about impacts on gentrification, on school capacity, on infrastructure, and how much is too much to give to the richest man in the world?
Come on, Mateo.
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, I see.
I'll take the microphone.
Mateo, you know, thank you.
How much is too much to give to the richest man? I won't swear. But it's outrageous. How much is too much to give to the richest man in the world, who last year paid zero federal taxes, okay, the corporation? We hear $5 billion, we hear $3 billion, $2 billion. For each one of you, how much is too much, how little is too little?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, we know you feel, we know you feel strongly. We know you feel strongly.
Budget cuts hurt people.
Okay, okay, okay.
Not adding fiscal resources hurts people. Swear words don't hurt people.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're all grown-ups here, we understand. But listen, as I said, every aspect of any incentive would have to be approved in full view and with full deliberation, and you are absolutely right that if Amazon does decide that they would like to locate in the Washington region or in Montgomery County, there will be tremendous impacts, and we will need to very directly address those issues, and we will have our work cut out for us. But we won't know until we know, and when we do, you are absolutely going to have a very strong voice in that process. Mark.
One place to look for some of the information is the state legislature and the Prime Act. And so if you Google the Prime Act and look at the components of the Prime Act, you can see what the governor is talking about putting into the deal at the state level. They have roughly alluded to Montgomery County and a very large, multi-billion-dollar sum of money that they would use to build infrastructure here. And the infrastructure, I think all of us would agree, is stuff that we would struggle to build otherwise, and it's not going directly to Amazon, and some of it will benefit businesses and residents in Montgomery County far beyond Amazon, but we have to see what the deal is. I, like you, would like to know more. So I look at this and I see the possibilities, and I see every pitfall that you've mentioned, and I think our job, and hopefully the state legislature's job, is to balance what might come out of this that's a plus, and what are the risks? And the question I asked the county executive early on was whether anything he had offered would jeopardize our ability to either continue funding our operating budget or our capital budget, the way we've been funding it, and he said, nothing on the table would jeopardize our ability to do that. That, to your question about would we have to be making cuts, gave me some level of comfort, at least at the county level. I don't know what I can say about it at the state level.
Nancy, and then George, if you'd like.
Let me weigh in. The good news is, if this occurs, Montgomery County, as has been said, is going to get long overdue infrastructure. That is huge. Whether or not, if it doesn't occur, we still need that infrastructure, and we are still encouraging development and growth in the areas that are commercial areas. The only difference is that with someplace like Amazon, it's a gigantic operation, right? It's predictable. We know those jobs are going to come here. We talked earlier about what we worry about for kids and families, and the jobs and opportunities that they need. We worry about how we pay for everything, for you. We know that if nobody comes, if there's no economic development, we're going to have to raise taxes, well, the next council will have to raise taxes, because the cost of delivering our existing services keeps going up. So that's why we work so hard on economic development. So if a large corporate employer arrives, and however they arrive, it will come over time within our existing parameters of what can be done anyways. At least it's predictable. We are still going to beat the bushes for employers to come and support us, and support our residents, and support our tax base. That is not going to go away. So one way, or the, but, we wouldn't have the same support from the state, I think, and that's one of the big things to think about. Of course, we don't know what the answer is going to be, and none of us know the details of what can occur, so we'll all find out together, and then we'll move on forward. But do not think that these kinds of challenges are going to go away, no matter what happens. And that's why we're all kind of excited about this opportunity, because of the opportunities that it brings for everyone.
So, look, the issue of budget cuts is not relevant to the Amazon discussion. If, and it's a big if, just numerically, the odds are against Amazon choosing Montgomery County, or one of 20. We're not at the bottom of the 20, but we have no idea if Amazon is coming here. But if they come, there will be a very large new commercial construction, which will be taxable construction, there will be a very large yield of new property tax on millions of square feet of commercial property. So there will be more revenue to invest in the budget, more revenue to invest in affordable housing, more revenue to invest in new school construction, more revenue to hire more new teachers. It's not a question of budget cuts. What I'm hearing, like we're hearing tonight, is while the prospect of getting Amazon is here, a lot of constituents, you're the first one I've heard curse at us in public, but a lot of constituents really angry and upset at the idea we might get Amazon. If we don't get Amazon, I anticipate there will be a lot of constituents angry and upset, how did you lose Amazon? And that's what, you know, that comes with the territory. But if Amazon comes, there will be a lot, a lot, of new revenue. Budget cuts are not the question, that's not the consequence.
Let me just add to that briefly, because I'm one of these people that do believe it would be a great plus for our county. And I look at it sort of like a return on investment. In Seattle, when Amazon came, it created $36 billion in net economic benefit over six years. $5 billion in direct investment, and Seattle only had like two or three high-tech companies before Amazon came, now they have 20 or 30, okay? If Montgomery County is lucky enough to get Amazon, as Mr. Leventhal said and others, there will be an infusion of revenue into our county, the likes of which you have never seen. And so the dollars that we are talking about, that are being publicly talked about, are a pittance compared to the return on that investment if we are fortunate enough to get Amazon, including the unprecedented investment in transportation infrastructure that our county so desperately needs.
Very good. Let's keep moving.
Okay, this is a tough crowd, this is a very sensitive issue, so please bear with me, and with all due respect to the young lady who just spoke, the DACA recipient, I sympathize with your situation, but please hear me out. There was a recent meeting between the Latino Democratic Club of Montgomery County and Democratic candidates running for county executive, and they were outlining their platforms for the election this year. And they, I don't know if all of them or some of them stated that if they were elected or re-elected, they would actively seek to defy federal immigration law and thereby undermining law enforcement in the process. These candidates didn't stop there. They went even further to state they would support county taxpayer funding to assist with the legal defenses of criminal illegal immigrants against deportation and imprisonment, as well as for legal representation for undocumented immigrants. This is what they stated. My question is, with all the economic struggles and high tax burdens of county residents, particularly the low-to-moderate-income citizens like myself who struggle in a tough competition for scarce affordable housing, how can any council member in good faith, current or future, allocate extremely limited public funds to pay for the legal defense of criminal aliens or any undocumented alien for that matter? How can any public servant of Montgomery County advocate adherence to the law while simultaneously seeking to undermine and outright defy law enforcement?
Okay.
Why should any county resident be responsible for paying the bills of criminal aliens?
Oh, it's good, you got your question.
We can barely afford to pay our own bills.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk to this issue. George Leventhal.
All right, so first of all, Montgomery County is not violating federal immigration law. Secondly, Montgomery County is not and does not propose in the future to violate any portion of federal law of any kind. Montgomery, no, sir, no, no. Well, sir, I'm trying to answer your question, okay? So there is no proposal to violate any bit of federal law in any way. We are in strict compliance with all federal law, we will always continue to be, we are not violating federal law. That's the fact. Secondly, providing legal defense to people who cannot afford an attorney for themselves is in the best tradition of the United States Constitution. It's entirely reasonable. There is no proposal, there is no proposal to defend criminal aliens. That is not a proposal before the county council. What is a proposal before the council, which we're all, all of us in support of, is to work with legal defense organizations that are providing representation for people facing deportation. Now, a violation of immigration law is a civil offense, it is not a criminal offense, and I think most of us, we cannot do everything. This is the sad reality of government, is that there's a lot of demands and finite resources. We cannot do everything. We are going to have to prioritize. So it is my view, and we're discussing this now, that the defense for those facing the risk of deportation will be for those who are not involved in a criminal case. We're very clear that those who are criminals are subject to prosecution, there's no confusion about that. And those who are incarcerated, their release date is made known to federal authorities. So criminal aliens are subject to deportation, that's the fact. Montgomery County complies with that, and every large community complies with that. Our policy is no different than Houston, or Los Angeles, or Chicago, or Philadelphia. We do not do immigration's work for it, just as you said. Struggling taxpayers can't afford to have county law enforcement do the federal government's job. So county law enforcement does not do immigration work. That's not our job. But neither do we, because we cannot, under law, impede or interfere with federal immigration. We can't do that. So we're strictly in compliance with federal law, and we are going to advance a special appropriation to provide legal representation to those who can't afford it. That's an entirely just and appropriate thing to do, especially when you have the risk of families being split, of children being left without parents, of children who attend our school system, who are United States citizens, United States citizens, who are at risk of being left without care, left without parents, divided families. That's not humane, that's not just, and that's not consistent with our values as a county.
Thank you, George Leventhal.
Okay. Okay, we have a lot.
So I'm on, I chair the Public Safety Committee. We've had long discussions with the law enforcement side of the county. They do not think that following the guidance from Washington will make us any safer. They believe that their ability to work with the community and not have the community driven by fear into withdrawing all contact with Montgomery County authorities in any respect is good for them. And so our police department is not interested in current immigration laws. They will do their job, they department is not interested in current immigration laws. They will do their job. They will protect us, as they will always protect us, but as far as what they think is the safest path, they prefer a path where we work with the immigrant community, we try to reassure them that we're not on Washington's page, so that we maintain this open door. So if you were to, if you feel unsafe, then go Trump straight. That'll really make you unsafe. We're doing everything we can do to foster, I think, a positive relationship with the community, and the police think this is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gigi Leeger, and I want to thank you for coming to the East County for your focus on economic development and on new infrastructure projects like the Burtonsville Access Road. But I also want to ask you about existing infrastructure. Roads in our area are crumbling. And I've seen the county come out, for example, I live off Peach Orchard Road. They came out and did some work on Peach Orchard Road a year or two ago, and it was supposed to last a long time. I think they said 20 years. There's no way that the work that was done is going to last 20 years. My community, Fairland Acres, three, four years ago, they came out and put this like really little thin layer of black topping on top of the road. Our roads are falling apart. It's my understanding we're three or four years out from getting our roads done. I don't know if our roads are going to make it that long. What, I appreciate the discussion of new infrastructure, but what are we going to do about existing?
Great question. Thank you. Councilmember Hucker.
Sure. Gigi, thanks for the question. Did he say you're in Quain Acres?
No.
Fairland Acres, I couldn't hear. Okay, thank you. I neglected to say at the beginning, I'm on the Transportation Committee with Roger and Nancy. And I've been on the council for four years, and it's been a good four years to be there, because my colleagues who were here during the recessionary years, they had to make very difficult budgetary decisions to scale back on an awful lot of things that were more discretionary, like neighborhood street maintenance and tree trimming, stump removal, things like that. Year after year, in the last four years, we've not only put in the full request that we get from the county executive, we've added more money on top of that during our budget process in April, and then again at the end of the year, when there's, if there's any additional money that was available. So year after year, Roger, Nancy, and I, and supported by the full council, have added more money on top of the county exec's request into the neighborhood street repaving budget. And what that has done is, we've been able to cut into a backlog that's been built up over many, many years. So, you know, Woodmore is, much of it got repaved, some of it got repaid by Washington Gas. Northwood, Four Corners, lots of neighborhoods all over the East County, lots of neighborhoods all over Montgomery County are either getting repaved now, have been recently repaved, or have moved up a lot in the queue, and they're on track to be repaved in the next year or two.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marsha Coleman Adabio. I'm with the Macedonia Baptist Church. I'm the social justice minister. And for one year, we have been fighting to save the Moses Cemetery. The Africans that are buried in this cemetery were the first generation of freed Africans in Montgomery County. Around 1960, the county, along with corporations, decided to pave over their graves and to make it into a parking lot. We found out about this. At first, we were told, as you know, that there were no bodies, no remains under the pavement. And then, of course, now we found maps and we found data that indicates, in fact, there may be as many as 500 African people under the parking lot. So we've demonstrated, as you know, in the county council, we've demonstrated all over the county, and yet nothing is really happening. No one has the real guts to stand up. I exclude Mark. Thank you very much, because you have been very good on this issue. But no one has had the real guts to stand up and say, "This is wrong. We cannot allow the first generation of African people to lie under a parking lot." We've had all kinds of lies from the, from HLC that, in fact, even though they just bought it, they don't intend to do anything with the property. Of course, this is ludicrous on the face of it. They bought, I think, the cemetery for about $20 million. So what I'd like to, now there's a secret going around that a white environmental group will be the manager of this environmental cemetery, and that basically the park service is only going to put a little plaque to indicate that there are 500 souls in this cemetery. I'd like to know, if you become county, what are you going to do to protect the Moses Cemetery, so that our children can learn about the history of Montgomery County?
Thank you. Well, as you described, an injustice was committed. When that land was paved over and a housing development was put up over it, and a parking lot was put up over it, it was wrong. And today, we have more rules and laws to stop that kind of thing from happening in the future, but this happened unfortunately in the past. And the question is, what do we do about it now? And that is a challenging question, because it is a, it is a tragic story, and there are a number of examples of programs that we are trying to build today to lift up the stories of communities that have been disenfranchised in this county, to bring out the stories of African Americans and freed people who were formerly enslaved. We are spending a lot of money on those programs, and many people wonder if diverting money out of those programs, or whether this particular need is as crucial as other ones that we are working on. And so that is the current state of the discussion. It is ongoing, and you are having a big impact, and we are well aware, you're, what you're saying is, is well heard. And whether we need to tear down the parking lot and tear down the community of housing in order to do something is a real challenge, but we will, we will continue to work on this. So... Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, esteemed county council. My name is Ibrahim Panzone, and I'm a DACA recipient. I came to the United States at the age of one, and ever since then, I've been calling this country, and more specifically, Gatesburg, Maryland, my home. And I'm a senior at Gatesburg High School, and I live in District Three, and I'm the president of an extracurricular club, and also an active member, an active community leader with United We Dream, and I alongside my cousin, who is here in the audience with me, organized the walkouts for a school for the Dream Act. So first and foremost, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to take the time to show my gratitude and thank each and every one of you for taking the initiative in protecting our community. And the Deportation Defend Fund means that hundreds of hardworking county residents won't live in fear of deportation. For me, personally, the Deportation Defend Fund means that I won't have to live in fear that myself or my family will get deported. And it also means that my 16-year-old cousin, who recently came to this country three years ago, who has to this day not seen a single C in his report card, doesn't have to live with the constant fear of deportation, and he can continue his education. So I stand here today, and I asked, I ask the council to restore peace of mind to our community, and to my family, and my cousin. So I ask for the protection of Montgomery County's inclusive and progressive agenda, and most importantly, I ask for your help in keeping us together. We're asking for a dignified life, free of fear and family separation. So my question
Thank you.
...to you is, are you committed to protecting undocumented immigrant families from deportation?
Thank you. We do agree with you. We have done everything we can to stand with you, and I just want to salute the students of our amazing county who have led the fight for Dreamers, who are leading the fight for gun control. Our students are just amazing, and you are a spectacular example, young man. So thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is John McNamara. I live in the Kemp Mills section of Silver Spring. I'm interested in a lot of the discussions here about test scores in East County and economic development, and raising the minimum wage to try and help kids along in school. I would also suggest that support for the library system is also essential to kids doing well in school. As Albert Einstein said, "The only thing you really need to know is the location of the library." Okay? I know where the library is. The Wheaton Library is down the street from my house. The White Oak Library is down the street from where we are right now. And both libraries are closed, okay? The Wheaton Library is undergoing what is supposed to be a two-year renovation that is going to stretch into almost three years, okay? The White Oak Library was going to have a refresh done that's going to take twice the amount of time that everybody decided it should take, okay? So for one entire year, neither one of those libraries has been open, and the people that live in my part of the county have been ill-served. I understand unforeseen circumstances happen. I understand that, you know, you didn't know that there was asbestos or whatever in the White Oak Library, but somebody decided that both libraries would be closed at the same time. With Councilmember Navarro, I shared a document in which library officials in the county said, "Well, we can't have the Little Falls Library and the Bethesda Library closed at the same time." I would hope that you would extend the same courtesy to people that live in West County. This decision has left the members of my community bereft. And if you don't know what that word means, go to the library and look it up.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And I just want to respond that it is, it is true, and I think it is unfortunate that the timing worked out the way it did. But I have to say that, you know, I had heard from so many of my constituents regarding the poor conditions of the Wheaton Library, which was quite aged and quite old and in disrepair. And so it took quite a while to get to a point where we could get the money to make sure that we could have the state-of-the-art library recreation center combination, which is what the community really deserves. And what we did is that we made sure that there could be a temporary library across, right across at the volunteer fire station to make sure that our residents could have access. It was also interesting, because the White Oak Library was not proposed for a refresh, and it was in 2014 that during a HHS committee session, actually, I raised that issue, and it was actually included to be refreshed, because once again, a lot of the constituents felt that this was a library that needed and deserved to be refreshed, because this is what residents expect, is a high-quality facilities. And so I do understand the frustration. Trust me, I feel it too. But I think that once it's done, and we worked really hard to have that alternative library right across from Wheaton, I think that this community, once again, as it was the theme earlier, this community will see that the amenities are up to par to what other parts of the county have, which has always been my motto, is that we need to make sure that everybody across the county has high-quality amenities and infrastructure.
Let me, let me just briefly observe. I was the first lead for libraries on our county council, and I would say to you, just like I believe we do recreation centers pretty darned well, I think we do libraries well. I regret that the two are being worked on simultaneously. But when we do build them, they are stunning facilities that serve our community well. So I get that piece, hearing that piece. I was not aware of the timing in that way and what its consequences was. I regret that. But I just want you to know, I do think we work real hard on libraries. I think it's one of the signs of our county that is most positive.
Don't listen to the counter when they're both over back.
I get... Yep.
If you're going to give the people of Bethesda and Bethesda a consideration, we deserve to...
I agree with you.
Okay. Well, we're going to deliver a little bit of good news, because there is going to be a ribbon cutting on April 2nd for the White Oak Library. So you only have a couple more weeks to wait. So it's happening real soon, and I was just reminded of that. So, thank you very much, Duru.
Good evening, everyone. I'm June Henderson. I'm a resident of my tagline, Old Columbia Pike, the street that you want to turn into four lanes and open up. I think the bridge is 106 years old, I think. Historic bridge. My issues are with transportation, the lack thereof in the White Oak community. It's great that you have the BRT, but on Old Columbia Pike, we don't have public transportation. It's a .60 mile walk for public transportation. So when you leave Rich Cheney, the bus comes around. That bus is very crowded, even at 11 o'clock at night. So when we come from Silver Spring, there are bus stops at every apartment building. I think you went up on the property taxes for education. So the majority of the properties on Old Columbia Pike are townhouses, condominiums, and no bus. I spoke to someone in Leggett's office. They said there's nowhere for the bus to turn around. The school buses actually have to back out when they pick the children up. So we are asking for a bus on Old Columbia Pike. I would welcome you to walk with us one day to and from .60 miles, so that you can see the park. The property that belongs to Dow Jones is litter. It is a park area. We need an arborist to go. Trees are falling. There's an area where people congregate to drink, do drugs. There's trash there. And I think I sent a letter to the council in 2014. So when you walk the path, you can see it. If you're driving in your car, you see nothing. Lockwood, drive. That's another issue. White Oak, Lockwood is an area, when things break, they're not fixed. It's not a nice place. If you want to bring new businesses into the community, we need streetscape improvements, we need landscape, we need storefront. It's only a half a block. That's all we're asking for. Transportation. We need accessibility to public places. We don't have accessibility to the community center. There's no accessibility to the library. There's no accessibility to MLK, the Community Center.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for your work. It's the ownership that you take over the community is, you know, it's just incredibly important. And over the work, the years, the work that you do to bring our focus to the needs in the neighborhood. It's the only way that you can get things done. And so just want to thank you for, first of all, stepping up into the role of community leadership. The specific issues you're requesting that we focus on around, around bus service is something that would be appropriate to try to bring out in discussion of the budget this year. And we are working hard to expand bus service into East County. And we had a major discussion about, you know, quote-unquote, BRT. What is BRT? BRT is buses. It's more buses. And we want you to be able to have reliable, frequent service in this part of the county. And, you know, that's the goal. So if we are able to create that, then it will feed out into neighborhoods, and it will be a more powerful and better service for people living up and down the corridor. And, but, you know, duly noted.
So as Chair of the Transportation Committee, and Mr. Hucker and I are on that committee, we will have that conversation with our Department of Transportation about bus service for you, and Ms. Florine as well. She doesn't want to be left out of this conversation. Thank you for raising it. It is, as the council president said previously, in having this dialogue, issues are brought to our attention that would not otherwise be on our scope. So thank you for raising it, and we will now attend to your business.
Yeah, input like yours is exactly why we had these town hall meetings
Right.
...in different parts of the county. That was really, really great, and we heard you.
Very helpful. And Ms. Henderson, I'll just chime in as the local council member. I know Brian's right behind you, and you already talked to him about the housing issue. We did just get some of Old Columbia Pike, I believe, repaved at the request of the condo residents nearby. And I am absolutely, where Roger and Nancy are, will fight for the right on service. Coming, you know, down the Pike is not just the BRT, as you mentioned, but we're really focused on micro-transportation too, and looking for, you know, other ways to have shorter buses, smaller buses, less expensive buses, Uber, Lyft, other services like that, to get people to major bus lines. So I think that's part of the solution. And we heard you, I heard you. Let's work with Brian. We'll get the arborist out there as well.
I will be working with the seniors.
Yep.
I will be working with the county for seniors and the disabled for transportation. It's an outreach position that we're working on right now.
Thank you.
Terrific. So let's caucus on all that. Thank you.
Really appreciate your work. And everyone who has spoken tonight. Thank you.
I'm Susan Loftus. So every time I heard, "Hey, Susan," I thought it was my turn. So thank you that it is my turn. Susan Loftus, I teach and learn education that is physical with students in Montgomery County Public Schools. Thank you. And I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to thank you for about this time last year, the county council made a special allocation or something of the such, so that kids could have safe play, safe play spaces at school. So I want to thank you for that. Can you imagine what it sounds like when the... Can you imagine what it sounds like when the recess doors are open? Have you ever been within earshot of an elementary school during recess? Joyful, joyful noise, it's wonderful. If you haven't done that recently, just walk by on the street and you'll hear it. So that's wonderful. So what brings me here today? Are we really getting safe play spaces for kids with the money that you wrote the check and it goes to your partners, MCPs? Doctors take an oath to do no harm. As an educator, I take that same oath to myself, whether it's testing, to over-testing kids, whatever it is, my job is to do no harm. And I think your job is too. One, what is the process? I've had documents sort of leaked to me. Why are documents leaked about what's going on at these seven schools? PTAs aren't the only stakeholders, community is. Because we want safe play spaces, not just for one year, two years, seven years, 20 years. Some of these schools are committed to real-life, breathing, natural grass. Now I hear, which scares the daylights out of me, that some elementary schools are considering with county money, plastic, toxic grass. Please follow up on that. And can you also commit to be...
My own son is at one of the schools that has been working for years to get some investment into the play space because the grass that was there turned into mud several times. The field was renovated and it turned into mud several times. And now, when they have recess or after school, the field is closed every time it's wet, which is regularly, and they have nothing more than the size of a basketball court for 700 children.
Absolutely.
And so those children, really, they don't have anything to do after school, they, staying after school to play with their friends is not even really a viable option. So we're looking for solutions that can, you know, create play space at schools where there's not room for a large field to absorb all the foot traffic.
Can you commit to safe play spaces, fiscally responsible...
I can commit personally that I will support something that I would put my own child on, that's what I'll commit to personally.
We maintain our breathing fields, they will, they will hold up. I've been at a school...
Okay, thank you, Susan.
This has been a...
No aeration, no top seating, no water. And we wonder why it turns to dust. It's not the natural breathing turf, please, these are kids, five years old, on toxic rubber.
We have been dealing with this challenge with the school system for many, many, many years, because when we give them money, they spend it on the kids, in this building typically. So over the years, we've by and large moved a lot of that maintenance work to the Parks Department. The challenge is, their budget then gets hit. So again, it's a question of money and getting it to the right people at the right time. So we'll continue to work on that.
Okay, and I do think that we should not allow crumb rubber, tire rubber, to be used. To me, that's just unacceptable. Mark?
So my office has gotten the sheets on some of the rubber fill, the plastic fill that's being proposed to be used, and we'll be sharing that with everybody on the council because it does include crumb rubber. I want to say something about the field you're talking about, because I saw pictures of the field right after it was finished, and I got to say, if that field had been built properly, the pictures would have been impossible to take. They showed a newly-done field after the first rainstorm, I guess it was, and they already had puddling in it. And that tells you they didn't grade the field, because a graded field runs off, a field that's not properly built doesn't. We have a habit of accepting really poorly-done fields. This county is littered with poorly-done fields, those poorly-done fields aren't playable, they drive the demand for artificial turf fields, because people say, "I can't play anywhere, give me an artificial turf field." We need to do a better job of putting decent fields everywhere, so we're not driven to what I agree with you with, is artificial turf fields, we shouldn't be driven there.
Thank you, and we have been investing substantial resources in the last two to three years in our natural turf maintenance program, because we know that there are many places where you can, if you plant the right kind of grass and you have the right kind of irrigation, you can actually maintain successfully a quality playing field with grass.
But the field has to rest a little while, this is a challenge, you can't put it into use immediately, so there has to be an understanding of the life cycle, so that, you know, and I do, I agree with the Chair of the Committee that funds the parks, which I also serve on, I think you could achieve economies of scale by letting the Parks Department handle all of these issues and the issue that Coach Fofo raised. I think we've got too many, too much grass maintenance, too much turf maintenance in too many different places. That would require figurative and literal turf to be given up by the school system, and that's something at some point we're going to have to come to terms with.
Yes, my name is Ken Jones, and I'm from the Burt Mills community. We, not too long ago, had Peter Foselman come over and talk about all the wonderful things that are going to be built out here at White Oak, and trying to help the economy like we all have heard. And he's also talked about having really a walkable community. And all of that, I think, is really, really terrific. But we've also heard from others that the school system in Northeast Consortium is not what we would like it to be, and there's the possibility that all these wonderful jobs will be created because people want to have what they feel is a good school system in order to live in a walkable community. So my question is, it's sort of a feedback loop here, if we could get it working, is what could having these wonderful facilities do to help our school system become better? And if we could get our school system to become better, then people would be more likely to live here, and not only would it be a walkable community, we would help you with all these transportation problems because they could walk to work instead of drive through our community.
Thank you, Ken, you really put your finger on an important issue there. And, you know, one of the problems in the schools, we've discussed a bit, is concentration of poverty. And we need to attract new investment to the community, new jobs, new housing, in order to change the distribution of, you know, to have more economic integration. And when you have a community that has economic integration, then you have a school that is, you know, more successful. And so that is a underlying reason why we have made such a focus on the East County and White Oak and creating a new economic center here. But as you say, you know, part of that is making communities walkable and bringing them up to the contemporary lifestyle that people want today. And if we're able to do that, it does reinforce our success with our bigger goal of driving economic integration, social equity, and great communities that are great places to live.
I just want to add that another important factor, and I know that the Northeast Consortium parents are very active, but I have also seen a lot of interest from retired folks who want to be involved in the, you know, in the quality of the schools and this, so they have established mentoring programs, you know, I've seen it in Cannon Road, for example, and, you know, this, and so it's really, it would be really wonderful as well to make sure that you also participate at the public hearings at the board level. Because, you know, as you just described, and the quality of schools are important because we want to educate our children, it also does contribute, obviously, to the quality of life, to property values, to everything else. So make sure that you also are directing this feedback to the Board of Education, to make sure that this Northeast Consortium, you know, issue is always front and center, that it's at top of the list, that anytime you're going to talk about any kind of interventions or special programs or more staffing and things like that, that it is front and center, that the Northeast Consortium should not be left behind, that this is a priority. And what you just said is very true. You know, one of the things that I hope we are able to manage, and I've always said, once we're able to get these redevelopment, these companies come in, our students need to have opportunities there as well, internship, mentoring, starting at the middle school, because they need to see themselves as a possibility of being able to get a job in this biotech firm or something to that nature, right? And that also helps companies because they feel like, hey, we have talent. So it is incumbent of all of us that the quality of the schools in these areas, whether we are revitalizing and redevelopment, that is the best they can be, and all of you can be also really great spokespeople to keep that, you know, front and center at the Board of Education level. We definitely hear it, and we will do whatever we can as well.
Maybe you could make one of our high schools a biotech.
Exactly. And I, absolutely, and I would just add, for example, I helped a partnership with the Hispanic Heritage Foundation, which had a coding program at Springbrook High School, and it was really for all students, but a lot of ESOL students. And we invited Jonathan Jen to come in and bring the renderings for what could happen in this Viva White Oak, and it was so important to have those students realize that, hey, if I develop an interest in coding and STEM fields, I can have a job right there, it's just right there across the street, very soon. So we are working, and we have been in conversations with the board and the superintendent to continue to make those links, WorkSource Montgomery, because this is what it's all about, which is actually very exciting.
Wayne Wagner, I'm with the Burt Mills community too. And I'd like to amplify and add a few specifics to what my neighbor said. It's great to improve the middle schools, but we have one of the oldest unimproved elementary schools in the county, Burt Mills Elementary, and it's falling apart. It needs more. It's older than me, and I'm over 50. I mean, we need a new Burt Mills Elementary, we need a better entrance to Burt Mills Elementary, one that doesn't drive through the small roads that we have available, one that doesn't demand bus drivers to be brave turning out of Northwest Drive onto, making a left turn onto 29 in the morning or in the evening. You know, it's great that they be brave, but that's not that kind of bravery. Okay?
Thank you.
We need more of the transportation infrastructure such as, well, just our sidewalks are a contentious issue in our community. Who is going to shovel the sidewalks that we're being asked to accept? Because a lot of us just don't want to put our backs into it and do the shoveling when it snows, or blizzards, or whatever, frankly. And as for the BRT, we want to see what's in it for us, because at the moment, since we live comparatively close to the Beltway, it's not so much of an improvement for us, but makes things worse. And I've also seen some of the designs for the bus stops, and those, as I was talking with the designers, they hadn't thought through some of the details, they hadn't realized that in the winter, the ice would dam up. They were saying that, oh, well, the drainage will be controlled by the trees that we're planting behind it. Did you know that it would require additional landscaping maintenance for these BRT stops? I feel justified in pointing out that these details have to be, you know, we have to sweat the details here, because it's only, it wasn't very long ago that, you know, we were cited with having the worst bus stop in the country on 29. And yes, that was fixed, sort of. At least it's not deadly anymore.
Okay.
But we've got to get those things set.
Well said.
Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you, yeah. Several points noted there. And certainly heard you about the age of Burt Mills and elementary school, and the need to do something about that.
Thank you. Buenas noches. My name is Claudia Barragan, I am the Policy Director for Brandi Brooks for Montgomery, she's running for at-large. But more importantly, I am a product of Montgomery County and I'm an immigrant. In 1995, I graduated from paid-branch high school, and my entire youth has been basically living throughout Route 29. I am that proof that immigrants, and I got Cs, so I'm not a perfect person, are coming back to Montgomery County. We want to give back because we were given a lot. One of the solutions, 20 years later, 1995 is when I graduated, right, 20 years later, I come back and I see nothing has changed in this area. And one of the reasons why is because there isn't a master plan that's been updated for the White Oak area, nor along the corridor. I'm an urban planner, that's the other benefit of being an immigrant and being educated, right? So I can come back and actually provide solutions. So what we're seeing as an urban planner, what I've seen in the planning, in the planning of this whole entire area, is that, yeah, a moratorium happened, but a moratorium doesn't prevent community planning from happening, right? So in terms of what we've been seeing is sector plans. The Gateway Plan in White Oak is a sector plan, the Crossroads in Burnsville is a sector plan. We haven't seen area plans. And area plans really focus and make us address all those issues, address the park issues that we were talking about for children, address transportation issues, the BRT should be part of this master plan. The other areas is, it addresses small businesses. Nancy Navarro, you mentioned land use, right? Basically, most of the master plans that we've been seeing here in the county only address land use preservation issues. They don't necessarily address historic preservation issues, and also cultural preservation issues, such as what we've seen with the cemetery, right? So a master plan, we can actually create something that is community-driven, because now we have participatory processes. And what we want to be able to see is people like me, who speak Spanish, we're bilinguals, who have been here, who have been growing, like dreamers, everybody, to be able to have their art input. So it's not just on your hands, because we know your hands are tied at times. But we can do this. Trust us that we can actually do this. So I'm asking you to please commit to a master plan for White Oak area tomorrow.
If I, I'm just going to, I'm just going to let you know, ma'am, that we really recently did a very comprehensive master plan for this whole area with a lot of input. It doesn't address every single last thing, that is for sure. But all the points that you have mentioned are in that plan. So we'll put you in touch with the planning department, and you can let them know what else we need to be doing, and we will take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You described a wide array of social, you know, community concerns, you know, which kind of goes beyond zoning and housing, and it goes into what does local government do in this community? And I think that's really what you were speaking to, and that is the work of community engagement, and that is the work of civic participation. So thank you, look forward to your continued engagement.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Di Pietro, and I live in Woodmore, around the corner. And my question is to the council about, the Economic Development Corporation has spoken to the East County, they've spoken to communities over in the west part of the county, and in one of their sessions, they brought one of the professors from Montgomery College, this was over in Rockville, they brought the professor from Rockville who has this wonderful program for people seeking biotech types of skills to support what I understand Viva White Oak wants to realize here on the east side of the county, where there's a Montgomery College campus a couple of miles away. So my question is, how will the council support the current residents of East County who need their support in order to get the jobs that will be supposedly coming to this part of the county?
Well, you know, that is the fundamental mission, right? If we're going to create economic opportunity, how is that opportunity available to people in our community? And that is what our workforce development program is all about, that is what Montgomery College is all about. But we really do have our work cut out for us. We need new programs that create those pathways from high school through college, Montgomery College, or you don't even necessarily have to go to college, into the workforce. And, you know, it's a growing area of work for the county. We have recently reinvented our entire approach to workforce development, but we've got a lot more to do. Unfortunately, we have to wrap up now.
We do, sorry, and I know there are lots of folks who have their questions, hands up for questions, we do have the council members here, feel free to speak to them afterwards. For County Cable Montgomery, I'm Susan Kennedy, thanks so much for joining us. For County Cable Montgomery, I'm Susan Kennedy, thanks so much for joining us.